What is the item that we're going into closed session about and then, and then the public can have a chance to talk?
Right, we have conference with labor negotiator concerning Fire Basic.
Okay, so the Fire Basic contract, all right. So at this time, really, we're going to open up the microphone. We're going to dismiss into public session. My anticipation will be there for maybe a half hour, max, probably, today. There's been a lot of discussion on this before, so you might have to wait 20 minutes, up to a half hour, until we're done with closed session. But if you want to speak now, the microphone is wide open. So each person that wants to has up to three minutes. And if anybody would like to address counsel before we go into closed session. Yes?
Good morning. I think most of you probably know who I am. I'm Tom Sharp from the Law Offices of Bennett Sharp. We provide legal counsel and representation for firefighters, Local 753. And I'm speaking in that capacity. I'm not certain my comments will be within three minutes. I think I can be very close to that. But I think before you go into closed session, there are a few points that should be brought to your attention. Many of these points were included in a letter that I sent to Mr. Phillips, Ken Phillips, your labor relations negotiator, last week in response to the events that have been occurring. But I would be remiss if I didn't reiterate those comments and add a few to you before you go into closed session. It seems to us that the action you're asked to take today is based on two premises that we vehemently disagree with. The first of those premises is the notion that the impasse that was declared by the city in March 2014 somehow still justifies the action that you're being asked to take today. The fact of the matter is, and it's legally significant fact, circumstances have changed drastically on significant issues since March of 2014. In my letter to Mr. Phillips, I go into great detail to explain why we believe those circumstances have changed. I don't need to reiterate those today because in the staff report that you were provided in connection with the special meeting, the description of the attachment A, which is the action you're asked to be, to take, to impose, the terms you're asked to impose, is described as the city's new last best and final action, or offer. Could become an action, hopefully not. That is significant. And to use the term that is used in the labor cases, where bargaining positions change on significant issues and impasse that may have existed, we are not necessarily in agreement that we were at impasse when it was declared, but we don't need to get there today. The labor cases hold that where impasse, the circumstances change, the impasse is broken. And that has a significant impact in that, once the impasse is broken, the, once the impasse is broken, the bargaining obligations of the two parties are revived. That's the term used in the labor cases. That's exactly what has happened here. The bargaining obligations were revived. We can't take action on some facts, some circumstances that existed in March. Now, this, and this ties into the second point I want to make. We did follow the city's impasse resolution, or the resolution of impasse process, which you will have in front of you as part of the, one of the attachments to attachment B. I think it's important to look at the impasse resolution process because it starts with the declaration of impasse by one or other of the parties, an exchange of bargaining positions. Then we have an impasse meeting. The purpose of the impasse meeting, which is found at, we're in section 3-617, paragraph C, sub-paragraph 1, Roman numeral 4. The purpose of the meeting is twofold. The first purpose is to engage in further effort to reach agreement. That is exactly what happened when we had the meeting on April 22nd, which was part of the impasse process. If you read the staff report, and let me tell you, I was at that meeting. At the very beginning of the meeting, the firefighters made, handed over a document which reflected a change in bargaining position. We then discussed the various aspects of the changed position. The city weighed in. At the end of the meeting, the city complimented us, the firefighters, in coming in with new proposals, and it was agreed that the proposals, which were conceptual in nature, would have to be reduced to writing, and thereafter numerous meetings, most of which I was not part of, occurred, and we ended up with another proposal and another vote. We never got to the second part, purpose, of the impasse meeting, which is to select a further impasse procedure. There was no need to do that. We weren't at impasse. That occurs if there are matters still at impasse. No one thought there was anything at impasse. The significance of that is, whether we reset the impasse process that we began in April, or whether we start over, we still get to the same place. What we should be doing now, rather than imposing terms and conditions today, what we should be doing is exploring, at the very least, further impasse procedures. Now, the question that I can envision coming on this is, what would be the purpose of that? And this is a recurring theme that I have been expressing to various city councils, various boards of supervisors, various entities, for quite some time. It is short-sighted to think that one party's definition of the problem and one party's definition of the solutions to that problem are the only solutions. That is why we have the impasse procedures. It's why they have worked, by and large, with a very, very few exceptions, with the city of Fresno, over the last 30 years. We get, we, the involvement of a new third party, someone who is not invested in the process. That new person comes in, whether it be a mediator, whether it be a fact-finder, whether it be some other procedure, because it allows, the impasse process allows for multiple approaches to resolving the impasse. We get someone else in who looks at the, at the circumstances and maybe comes up with a new solution. That is what we urge that we do. Now, I realize it took some time from the declaration of impasse through today, but no one can say there hasn't been movement. There hasn't been progress. That is why you are presented with a new last best and final offer.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Appreciate that.
I will take that hint, and that is, I will just close with, we urge that you reconsider any thoughts that you may have about adopting the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to, yes, Pete, come on up?
Good morning, counsel. Excuse me. You know, firefighters are funny people. It's a funny profession. We don't forget. We always remember. We remember the times that we spent away from our families, all of us. Not to be away from our family to do our job, but to get you elected. We believe in you. We believe in what you said, and we won't forget that. We need to be back at the table. We need to be back at the table to come up with a solution. We don't need to be worrying or addressing legal issues. We need to go back to the table and come up with a solution that both sides can live with. In 2009, the mayor and the city manager at the time, Mark Scott, said to us, "The city is cash poor. Will you help us?" And we did that. We successfully negotiated three years of furloughs. A few years later, Mark Scott and the mayor came back and said, "We're on the verge of bankruptcy." I didn't believe it then, but I believe it now. "We're on the verge of bankruptcy. Can you help us out?" And we did that. Now, the mayor and the city manager are coming back to us, saying, "We need you to help us out again. We need to build our reserves and pay off debt." And we understand that. As I mentioned before, we didn't get into that much debt overnight. So I don't understand why we have to take such extreme measures to address it overnight. We need to be back at the table. We want to see our city succeed, but it needs to be tolerable for the firefighters. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Any other members of the public like to comment before we go into closed session? Again, you'll have a chance afterwards as well.
Good morning. D. Barnes, 2607 Fresno Street, Suite D. I'm not going to say anything about whether or not they should be giving or not. I just wanted to speak to what the lawyer talked about. And we've all seen that Fresno County just lost a case recently over imposing on their employees. Local 39 just, just won against the city recently and had to pay out. So I would just urge you, from the outside looking in, people I've talked to, they see the fact that they have still been negotiating and things have changed, as recently as two weeks ago. So I really believe that counsel should be wise and really think about what could be the consequences. Because if you impose today, and they do sue the city, and it goes, you know, a year or two down the road, like a dividend local 39 or with the county employees, what is it going to cost the city then? And I will say, most of the employees, we have really tried to step forward and really help the city during this tough time. And it's really hard for my members especially, because my members are the ones that are processing the paperwork for the bills that get paid, they're processing the paperwork for the raises that are given out, or the new hires. And so it's really, really hard for me to go to my members and make a case for stepping forward and helping the city, when they continue to see bad decisions being made and money being wasted on attorney fees and fighting with employees and the citizens. So I would just really urge you to really think about what could be the consequences, as opposed to having a mediator, or going to fact-finding, or sitting back at the table and talking to the firefighters. Because I believe a lot of them are willing to continue to help the city. So, thank you.
Steve, anybody else would like to address us before closed session? All right, then, we're going to dismiss the closed session. We'll have to deliberate back there for a few minutes, and then we'll come back out and continue public, the public open session. City Attorney, do you do anything, like, report back out of closed session?
There's nothing to report from closed session.
Okay. All right. Then, coming out of closed session, now we're on to the, the presentation, I believe. Isn't that correct, in the order that we're going today? This staff presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Cardell, if you would.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. Jeff Cardell, Director of Personnel Services for the city. I need to make a couple of corrections regarding the agenda item. First is that, in the staff report, we've identified an effective date of the terms and conditions. It should read July 14th of 2014, not 2015. And also, that the terms and conditions that are recommended for approval today would, on the pension side, also include a 12% contribution for all new hires on or after the effective date. With that, we are here as part of a public hearing, and if I could ask for the, the presentation to come up on the screen. I want to start with a chronology of the events that have taken place as we have been meeting and conferring in good faith with the Fire Basic unit. We began back in about May of 2013, and that, as was alluded to earlier, we did ask for some significant concessions at the outset. The city was experiencing some significant financial strife. The bankruptcy word was thrown about. Initially, we were looking at about 8% in terms of concessions, and over the course of time, we reduced that down to 4%. In, in, in large part, because we were interested in reaching agreement. We were interested in negotiating in good faith, and we were also recognizing that the, the tide was changing then, that our revenue stream was increasing. Over the course of several months, negotiations ensued, and we reached our first tentative agreement in November of 2013. There was also, and that was on November 5th. There was also a change in union leadership about that time. And as a result, in January 2014, we were asked to make modifications to the tentative agreement. And consistent with that request, and because of the city's interest in reaching a mutual agreement, we agreed to those modifications. The fire management unit ratified that modified tentative agreement. The Fire Basic unit rejected that. We continued to meet after that rejection, and ultimately, in March, on March 17th, the city declared impasse with Fire Basic. We confirmed that impasse in writing on March 20th. And we conducted the impasse meeting on April 22nd. It was at that impasse meeting where there was confirmation of the positions of the respective parties, and the bargaining unit presented revised a pro, proposal for agreement. At that time, the city advised the bargaining unit that if they were to take that modified agreement, or that modified proposal back to the membership and to receive ratification, that we would give that, if it was ratified, that, that proposal some consideration and bring it back to the council. In June, June 5th, Fire Basic rejected the union proposal. Subsequent to that, the city provided written notice to Fire Basic regarding the intent to proceed with a public hearing and to request that the council implement terms and conditions of employment. Fire Basic submitted yet another revised proposal at that council meeting where there was a public hearing scheduled. That proposal included modifications to health and welfare, the uniform allowance, deferred compensation, pension contributions, and the length of the agreement. The city considered that revised proposal and adopted it as the last best and final That last best and final offer was presented to the membership for a vote on July 7th and July 9th. Fire Basic failed to ratify that last best and final offer. I'd like to review with you the history of some compensation changes that have taken effect with this bargaining group since July of 2008. And as you can see, the salary for this group has increased in, on July 1st, 2008, a 1.5% increase. January 1st, 2011, a 2% increase. August 8th of 2011, a salary reduction of 2.5%. January 1st of 2012, a 2% increase. And August 5, 2013, the restoration of the 2.5% decrease from 2011. In addition, the employees in this group received a, a 2% increase by virtue of an employer-paid member contribution, of the employee's contribution into the retirement system. Also during this period of time, the city's contribution to health insurance has increased by $208 a month, approximately 31.5%. We've also improved the health reimbursement arrangement, and we have eliminated the reduction of the first 224 hours before converting the sickly balance from 40% to 50% as value of that account. Over the course of time, there's also been increased premium pays and vacation accrual. In addition to the salary reduction, this, this bargaining group has been furloughed. And I need to clarify that that has not been without objection. This bargaining group sought a temporary restraining order from the city to preclude the furlough. However, that, the city prevailed, and ultimately, we entered into a side-letter agreement that resulted in the furlough of 84 hours in fiscal year 10, and 96 hours in fiscal years 11 and 12. In addition, there was a one-time reduction of 24 hours in the holiday leave bank in fiscal year 10, and there were no holiday leave cash outs in fiscal years 10, 11, and 12. However, those hours were not lost. The major points in the last best and final offer, that we would ask the councils to give consideration for implementing terms and conditions today. First, in terms of pension, that the city would discontinue paying 1% of the employee contribution for current employees. In addition to that, for all new hires on or after the effective date of the implementation of terms and conditions of employment, those new hires would contribute 12%. Health and welfare, that the monthly premium would be split such that the employer would pay 75% instead of 80%, and the employees would pay 25% instead of 20%. And that in the future, any increase in monthly premium would be split 50/50, with the understanding that we would be capping the contribution for the employer and the employee at 70% and 30%. If there would be any other bargaining unit that has a, negotiates a better benefit, then we would provide a me-too clause associated with that. We're also asking that the, the council implement a discontinuing of the deferred, deferred compensation contribution of $36 per pay period, and reduce the uniform allowance to $550 in this fiscal year. So what are, what's the outcome or the consequence from a financial perspective? Imposing the terms and conditions of employment today, the city will save approximately $823,000 in fiscal year 15. That's approximately 2.38% of salary and benefits for this group. Not imposing the terms and conditions, for each month that imposition is delayed, the city loses approximately $73,200. That's in addition to the lost savings or concessions that were, that were not achieved in last fiscal year of about $422,000. What we're asking counsel to do today is to take action, to adopt a resolution that would implement terms and conditions of employment, such as those outlined, and attached to your staff report, effective today's date. Having said that, this, we need to understand that that does not forever foreclose our obligation to meet and confer to reach a mutual agreement on a memorandum of understanding. And so, once, once implementation is accomplished, we could be going back to the table as soon as tomorrow, as soon as this afternoon, as soon as, whenever the bargaining unit reaches out to us, we'd be happy to sit down and talk. I think it's important to note in conclusion that the city has made significant strides in trying to reach agreement since May of 2013. We have reduced our position ultimately from an 8% request for salary and benefit concessions down to about 2.38%. We have agree, we have attempted on several occasions to reach agreement, and unfortunately, we're at a point today where we continue to remain at impasse. Be happy to answer any questions after the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Cardell. All right. Now, we're going to go to public comment, and we are going to take 30 minutes of public comment, and with a max limit of two minutes per person. And many of, many of you, when you spoke a couple weeks ago, went under two minutes in them. The more people that go under two minutes would guarantee that everybody could squeeze in. We've got a council member that, today was a special meeting that has to be out of the room relatively quickly, so we've got to kind of keep things moving. But if you'd like to comment about what you just heard, or about anything in general related to this subject matter, you can come back up to the microphone and, and take up to two minutes. Yeah, please.
One thing that wasn't mentioned, Mr. Cardell mentioned the increases that we received, but at the same time, we were making concessions far above the 2%. We were making concessions to the tune of about 3% to 6% from 2009. So when we were getting raises or increases, we were doing more in concessions, and that's been consecutive for the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Council President, council members, my name's Rick Steitz, representing ATU today. As you all may all remember, ATU went through this process a year and a half ago. I'll, I'll try and be very brief. I urge the council and the city of Fresno to continue to negotiate and reach an agreement with the members of the fire, fire organization. Whatever action you folks think that you need to take today, and I've heard Mr. Cardell mention it somewhat encouraging, please make sure that the sides continue to discuss and negotiate and reach an equitable agreement. Do not impose on the firefighters of the city of Fresno. I believe the effect of an imposition, the effect on the morale and labor relations would be very negative for this city and very long-lasting. I heard Mr. Sharp's comments this morning that the process hasn't been completed. We went through it a year and a half ago, in my understanding of it and the experience, it has not been completed. Send these folks back to the negotiation table. Do not impose.
Good morning, counsel. Do I have to give my address?
You just give us your name for the record.
Marina Magdaleno. I too am here to, to ask that you not impose on fire today. You know, being at the table is a, is a, is a real laborous process. Both sides give and take. I, I believe that labor is always the loser in the battle, because the city has much more power than, than we do in labor. But I also believe that, I, I do believe that both sides have been working diligently since the beginning of this process, and even, you know, when the city is claiming that they were at, at impasse. But the negotiations still continued, and each time they meet, they continue to make some progress. And, you know, our people in our city work really, really hard, and I know that you know that. And it's very, very difficult, and it's very disheartening when, you know, the, when the members of, of the working class have to continue the mem, when the members of, of, of the working class have to continue to make, you know, concession after concession, and we have continued to make those concessions year in and year out. One of the things that really bugs me, and I will have to say this, is that when the city brings forth all the things that, you know, that they have given, you know, raises, but what you don't hear and what you, what you don't realize is that the majority of the employees in this city are underpaid and have been for a very, very long time. If you recall, there was an attempt to correct that a few years ago by, by doing a classification and comp study, and the employees were really animated and, and really wanted to work on that and, and provided a, a wealth of information to the city, and then it died because there was no money. So they, they led the employees to believe that something like, good like this was going to happen, and so I, I'm just saying that if, if, you know, give it one last chance, let both sides really put all the cards on the table, and see if we can come up with a good agreement here that both sides can live with. It's gonna be everyone's, no one's gonna be a clear winner in this situation, but I think that by imposing today, I think that the city will be losers, and, and I think that it, you will never be able to capture back a positive relationship with these people, uh, with any of us, and, and, you know, to be really honest with you, so I urge you to, you know, those of you that have already made up your mind, um, that you really, really deep, deep, dig deep in your heart and, and, and come up with a good solution. It's easy to impose, I know that. It's harder to think outside the box. Thank you very much.
That's Marina. Would anybody else from the public like to comment today? Please step up with the microphone and...
Good morning, uh, Mr. Brown, members of council. My name is Charles Krugman. I reside at twelve thirty-seven P Street in the city of Fresno. I'm here today speaking on behalf of Fresno Stonewall Democrats to publicly say that our members have come forward passing a resolution in support of ongoing continued negotiations with the, uh, bargaining unit of Fresno Firefighters Basic. We believe that, uh, implementation of arbitrary conditions cre, uh, conveys a very negative image for the city of Fresno that will be long-lasting. There are other options for the city to address these issues. Perhaps a long-range plan needs to be addressed, such as the implementation of a public safety tax to provide more revenue, to provide basic city services such as fire, police, and other types of services. Therefore, I would recommend today, on behalf of Fresno Stonewall Democrats, which represents the interests of the gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender communities through the Democratic Party, that this process of arbitrary concessions, uh, be, uh, discontinued, and that other alternatives be considered to address, uh, implementation of a fair contract with Fresno firefighters. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to take two minutes up the microphone?
Morning, sirs, city manager, ma'ams. Um, as you know, my name is Lee Sharp. I'm representing the seven-five-three. I understand that you're in a difficult position today. Um, obviously, you've been elected to make those hard choices, but we on our side are also in a difficult position. Before you impose today, or you, you, you make a decision that could have ramifications just not from, just not from today, but even years on, I ask you, why don't you just go out to a fire station? Visit your fire stations in your districts and see if it's worth imposing on. Find out what we do, our day-to-day operations, and the kind of caliber and the people that you have. And, um, as we speak about different numbers and two point five and two percent here, when it comes down to it, I understand that it's dollars, and I understand fiscal responsibility throughout the city. Um, and fiscal management is obviously key to success. I understand that, but when you look at the big picture, sir, and you wanna take our uniform allowance, I don't understand that. You're taking away from our, our equipment that keeps us safe from HIV and hepatitis C and fires and things like that of that nature, and you wanna reduce that. Um, sir, that'd be like taking, um, having the police officers pay for their own bullets. I don't understand why you wanna take away from our safety equipment. So these are things I ask you as you make this difficult decision today is that, look at the big picture, go out to your fire stations, look who's, and so find out the people that are supporting your districts. And, uh, with that, thank you very much, sir.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Carlton Jones. I'm a member of your Fresno Fire Department, and, once again, I'm here requesting that you, you don't impose on the behalf of, of our local. And again, we, we throw out a bunch of numbers. One of the numbers that I'm offended by is when I hear someone say that, uh, you'll be losing seventy-three thousand dollars. Um, I guarantee you that everyone out here is, is worth that. Everyone that works and the things we go through is well worth that. You're not losing it, you're getting a very good discount if you're only spending seventy-three thousand dollars a month on this group right here. Um, you know, I've been in this position, one of the things that, that, good that I heard is that we should go out and ask for a public safety sales tax. Um, if you were part of this last election, you'll know that, um, public safety sales tax measures have done fine. And for all of you guys that, we as a union have worked on your campaigns, you see how hard we work, you see how we'll get out there and help sell that message, I think that, uh, can definitely answer the question when it comes to equipment and personnel. That's something that the city of Fresno, as busy as we are, should have done a while back, and we would like to see that be a part of this negotiations, and we'll help you on that. Um, we've continued to help. One of the other things that, that I heard that just doesn't make, uh, sense, especially as, um, a councilman and a fireman, when someone says that, uh, we took away two, two and a half percent and then later gave back two and a half percent and it made you whole, uh, if you understand numbers, that's just not the case. Um, when you take two and a half percent and you give two and a half percent back to what we're currently making, it doesn't make us whole. And we've continued to do that, and we've never been back holes where we should be. Uh, we are a very busy fire station. Um, part of the impasse process is, uh, fact-finding and mediation, we'll be able to show you that, and that's all we ask, is let's continue to be fair, we'll show you our worth, and thanks again for your time.
Carlton. Anybody else from the public like to step up and address council today?
Good morning, council. My name is Christian Palmer. I'm a fire captain with Fresno City Fire and a member of Local seven-five-three. Um, this whole impasse process, to me, has been a lot more just, than just about dollars and cents. It's about right and wrong. I talked to you last, a couple weeks ago about sitting down here, making a commitment to the city, and, uh, an agreement that I thought I was a two-way street here. I heard your lawyer talk, the city's lawyer, talk numerous times about negotiating in good faith, but I read in the paper that the city, the mayor's budget is assuming one point eight, one point six million dollars in concessions from fire. How is that negotiating in good faith when we've already decided that they're, we're gonna give you one point six, not give you, you're gonna take one point six, one point eight million dollars from us? The lawyer stated that, uh, they started with eight percent concessions and reduced it to four percent, uh, for a desire to reach an agreement and, um, improve city, uh, and because of improving city revenues. He said Fire Basic failed to ratify the agreement. We didn't fail to ratify it, I feel that we succeeded in not getting it passed. I mean, in negotiations, you give, he shows these raises on one page, and then he shows the stuff that was given back on the other page, so you can't really see the correlation. You give something now to help the city who's bleeding with the, with the understanding that, okay, now the bleeding slows down, we're gonna kinda give it, you're gonna start to get some of that stuff back. That's how negotiations work. The city, he said, the city made significant strides in trying to reach an agreement. They started with their eight percent, and they whittled it down to four percent, and he's mad that we're not agreeing to this. We didn't come to you and say, hey, we want eight percent raises and whittle it down to four percent, so, I, I mean, to say he's upset or that, that Mr. Rudd says we're upset that we didn't accept this, I mean, that, this has never been about something equal, this has been about, we're gonna take something away, it's just how, you want the carrot or the stick. That, that's gonna live with you forever, I'll tell you that. Um, this is, this is about following through on a commitment. We hold up our end of this commitment every single day. I'll leave you with this, you guys have the decision today to decide if you're gonna take from us, from the firefighters. You have that ability, that's your job, and we elect, we helped to elect you in these positions for these, uh, to make these tough decisions, I get that. But when you go today and you decide that you're gonna take, uh, reduce my, uh, pension or reduce my health and welfare, you, you know what you don't have the ability to do? You don't have, at the end of my thirty-year career, to come back and take that cancer away. You don't have the ability to take away my broken body, my, my lonely nights with my wife, you don't have the ability to take away all those memories of these horrific accidents and things that I go to on a daily basis. I made that decision seventeen and a half years ago to stand up here and do what was right for the city. Yes, do I want this job? I love, we all love this job, every one of us. You know, none of us are gonna quit right now because of what you impose on us, because we love this job, we love what we do, but I made that agreement that under, with that understanding that the city was gonna help take care of me too, so. I ask that you think about that before you impose on something. I don't think most of us are asking for anything, I really don't. It, and again, to me, it's not as much about the salaries, it's about the comments and the way we've been treated, so, thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Anybody else would like to address council?
Good morning, council. I'm here to, uh, support whatever the city Fire Department, seven fifty-three, is looking for. I'm here to also remind you that District two, four, six, and seven were pro Mayor G. Now you're putting it on them because that didn't go through. We do not believe that you're representing your, uh, I do not believe personally that you're representing your districts correctly by putting public saf, safety as we'll do whatever we want with these people. These are dedicated men. I'd trade places with these guys any day. These guys are dedicated to saving our city. They were in a fire in Del Monte, at a building in Del Monte. Find out, now we have an asbestos problem, and they have a clean-out going out there. These guys were first responders to that mess. They're up here to make a representation, they represent the city of Fresno. That's what they, they hired to do, they love their job. These guys are dedicated. You have term limits, you'll be gone six, four, four, eight years, you'll be gone. We have a leadership that's not leading. Our mayor should be here, representing and talking, instead of talking behind a building or behind a closed door and telling everybody, this is what we're gonna do. A true leader should be out here in front with everybody and listen to what's going on, not watching it on TV or getting advice from a cell phone. I, I honestly believe our Fire Department is so understaffed compared to like a city like Sacramento, who has like six hundred Fire Department employees. We have two hundred and eighty, under three hundred. We need four, five hundred, and, we need code enforcers, we need fire code enforcers, enforcers bad. We're just understaffed, and now we want, now you wanna play games with their, with their lives and their, with their, uh, jobs. I appreciate you, your time, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any, anybody else like to make comment before we come up to council comments? All right, Councilman Brand, you've punched up.
Thank you, Council President. I wanna thank Pete, and James, and all the firefighters. I know you guys have worked hard over the past six months to try to find a resolution. The fact that we're here today probably means both sides have failed, and that's, that's bad, but we have to find solutions. You know, the city, in the two thousand fifteen budget, has started the process to restore the Fire Department. We all know the history, uh, the lack of commitment over the years, but it was a big start this year with four million dollars for four engines, one truck, uh, seven new firefighters. And I did listen to you guys a couple weeks ago at our public meeting, and the two key issues were pension, which directly affects everybody, and health and welfare costs, but to show you from our point of view on pension cost, when I started in two thousand nine, the annual cost for pensions for the general fund was seven point three million dollars. In two thousand fifteen, this year, it's twenty-four point one million dollars. That's almost three hundred percent increase, so it's going in the wrong direction. That does not include twelve million dollars that the taxpayers pay every year on the pension override tax. And about a year ago, the Pension Board, uh, agreed to reduce the presumed assumption on the pension fund from eight point five percent to seven point five percent. The single biggest factor that affects our cost of pension is the return on the market and the presumed rate of return. And at seven point five percent, we're still above what Cal-Purs is and other, other, uh, entities out there, so there's still a lot of issues out there. We talked about, you know, Fresno is probably the best fully-funded pension in the state of California, and based on our actuarial, we're about a hundred and eight percent fully-funded, but actuarials are all based on assumptions. Stanford, a couple years ago, examined all the pension funds in California, they concluded we're eighty-five percent funded, so it all depends on the assumptions, but my point is that pension costs are a big factor, long-term for the city, and I'll get to this later, in terms of trying to restore services and trying to provide fair compensation and competitive compensation to all of our members, including the firefighters. And the second issue is health and welfare, and I know it affects everybody directly, and you guys, definitely affects, and I did listen to the stories of exposure to chemicals, and I have, and, and the falls and, and the risks, and I have friends, many friends from high school that became firefighters. Jack Coleman retired a few years ago. I know he fell through a few roofs and he's got banged up, I understand that, I do get it. I understand you guys have a tough job, and I think your compensation should reflect that. But in just the past two years, our health and welfare costs have went up two point nine billion dollars to nearly seventeen million dollars, and I don't think anybody up here is gonna say it's gonna go down in the future. So we have to find a way to be fair, yet try to contain these two ongoing costs that are really taken away from the entire general fund. And last week, and a little bit this week, people made comments about city financial decisions, and they're true, and in the past, cities made some bad decisions, but, you know, you can't blame us for decisions that were made in two thousand two or nineteen ninety-five. If you do a demarcation between pre-two thousand nine and post-two thousand nine, in fact, from two thousand one through about two thousand eight, the city issued nearly a half a billion dollars of lease revenue bonds with about thirty-eight million dollars a year in debt service. That's what we inherited when we started in two thousand nine. That, more than the recession, was one of the main things that caused the city to come very, very close to bankruptcy. But since that time, I've introduced several financial reforms, debt management policies and so on, to make sure we don't repeat those mistakes of the past. And the mistakes have also been on the MOUs. There's MOU mistakes that probably cost millions of dollars, and when there's a mistake on a bond, it's not a one-time mistake, it's a thirty-year mistake, but please give us the benefit that we're trying to make amends. Nobody's perfect, people make mistakes, but those mistakes that were made ten or twenty years ago, we're trying to find solutions now. During this budget process, for the first time in, in six years here, we finally weren't laying people off, we were finally getting to the point where we're adding back, trying to restore services, but a city is more than just police and fire. Police and fire are certainly at the top of every list, but it's, it's parks, it's curbs, gutters, streets, it's a million different things, and we can't ignore infrastructure, for example, forever. We're spending about two million dollars a year on our street maintenance, we need to spend fifteen million dollars a year. We've probably got eighty, ninety, a hundred million dollars in deferred infrastructure out there we're not even addressing. So we have to find ways to balance all of these items to make this city a city that we're all proud to live in, and we try to make it the best for ourselves and for future Our obligation here, I think for the last six years, we've made a lot of cuts, and I think the solutions in the, in the future- And I think the solutions in the future are not, I think we've made about all the cuts we could do. I think we need to, our council and our administration need to be committed to finding efficiencies and new revenue sources. And I'm constantly looking to find ways to increase revenues, to expand the economy, the economic base, and those, when that's done, the sales tax, property tax, those kind of revenues come into the city and we're able to pay the fair, and I would agree with the comments by some of the speakers, I don't think anybody in the city is overpaid. And a fireman made a comment a couple of weeks ago that nobody gets rich. He's right, nobody gets rich working for the city. You guys are doing it because you're dedicated. And there's a lot of other dedicated people in different occupations that work for the city. Really, our challenge as we go to the future is to try to balance the restoration of all the services, fire and police and parks and public works, and at the same time, try to hire people back, because we all know there's shortfalls everywhere. We also need to balance and find, you know, equity and compensation. Because I believe there's a market out there that defines what we pay for firefighters and benefits and wages, what we pay police officers and everybody. And if we get too low, we're going to lose our best people. I understand that. I've talked to POA about this. And it fundamentally comes down to this, what you guys are worth. And I don't think anybody here is going to say you're overpaid, but we have to reconcile what you're worth with what we can afford. That's our challenge as we go forward. So, you know, the imposition, if that's the way it's voted, is not closing the door. The door is open. I recognize all the issues, I recognize the dedication and the good things you do, but please understand, from our point of view, we have a lot of other things on our plate. We're trying to find ways to partial out in 100 different directions with a limited amount of money, but I'm committed to work towards doing that. And in future years, to work towards making sure you guys are compensated fairly from your wages, your benefits, your pension and so on. So, it's difficult for me today to make the decision, you know, to impose, but I'm going to make the motion that we adopt the resolution that does, is that the proper way to do it, city attorney? City attorney? The motion would be to adopt the resolution?
Yes, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as presented by staff with the staff modifications.
Okay, that's my motion. And again, my plea is for everybody to come back together. We did this before with ATU. Within 30 days, I believe, we had a resolution. I'm willing to listen, to find solutions, to make sure, in the end, we both, we're not going to get what we want, but we get most of what we want or part of what we want, but it's fair and equitable and we're all working together for the future of Fresno. Thank you.
All right, I will second that motion for Councilman Brand. Councilman Jeong, you're punched up.
Thank you, council president. I'll try to be short, but I'll just, I think what Lee was trying to say in this conversation is that this is a difficult decision, at least. I know that maybe there's an impression out there that, that the body up here hasn't gone through a pretty lengthy process. At least from my perspective, folks, I'll tell you, wherever the vote is, I will respect my colleagues, but just from the inside out, this is one of the hardest working council group that I've seen, and that takes, and that has had to make some very tough decisions. And that has asked probably four or five different version of the same question to get to a comfort level. And this comfort level is sometimes not even, you know, where you're like 100% sure. But to get to a comfort level that we think, or that individually think that this is the right decision for what's in front of us. And so, I just want to make sure that our guys out there understand how difficult, how difficult this is for all of my council colleagues. You know, we love our administration, don't get me wrong. We disagree on many things and we've had those battles privately and publicly as well. But to believe that this is a simple decision for any of my colleagues up here, I will tell you, it's not. They've, from what I've seen, there's a lot of strain, especially when you're looking at a group of guys that means so much to our city in so many different ways. And so that doesn't mean that, you know, our other employees are not equally appreciated. But just to, I hope you guys see that, that this body, whether it's on a daily basis or not, at least I'm very, I've been comforted to see how hard we all have worked on these tough decisions. And so I just want to make sure that there isn't an impression that, that, you know, we go out and we come up and then, oh, it's voting, it's done. It's not. It does weigh, whatever side it is, it weighs on us a lot, especially when it's our employees, our families, our residents, our community, and not just our employees, but the impact that it has. So those are my comments, and I just want to make sure that at least it's said from that perspective. Okay, folks? Thanks.
Councilman Baines.
And I'm not going to be long. I want to just, you know, guys, we've heard a lot over the last couple of weeks, last month or so, and, you know, I don't want you, I don't want you all to think that there wasn't significant effort on all parties, both sides, to come to an agreement that everyone can live with. So, there's a lot that happens behind the scenes that most, that 99.5% of folks will never know. And that's unfortunate, but that's the truth. There's, this council has tremendous respect for the fire body. And I'm going to echo my colleague, that Councilmember Jeong, that we worked, the council worked very hard too, along with you all. This wasn't a one-sided effort with the administration and just the fire body. This council worked very, very diligently. And this council put a lot on the line, a lot of faith, on both sides, the administration and with the fire body. But ultimately, we are the ones that have to make decisions. That's what, that's what we get elected to do. Contrary to popular belief, these decisions are very difficult. Very. It's not easy. If you think for a moment that these decisions are easy, you'd be very mistaken. And if you think for a moment that we don't work hard and we don't lose sleep over every single one we have to make, you'd be mistaken too. So I just encourage, if in fact this council does decide to impose or implement terms or whatever the correct terminology is, that efforts be made immediately to restore the conversation, because it's not over. And it seems as though we're very close. That's the impression that I get. And I'm going to encourage the body to have, if at all, you guys can, have some faith in your leadership. They're working hard and it's not easy. It's very difficult. Their job is very, very difficult. And I encourage the leadership to talk back to the administration, talk back to our bargaining team, because this council very much wants to come into agreement. So, those are my comments.
All right. Come, you're going to, no, I, if you want to be last, you can.
No, it doesn't.
Okay. So, go ahead, Sal.
A lot of the comments that were made by some of the firefighters and other folks in the audience don't need to be repeated. I've, it was going to be some of the things that I was going to say. But I'd just like to make a few comments. First off, I'm not going to support the imposing on that. I don't believe that it's a benefit to anybody. And if anything, to some degree, it brings people further apart. Tell you, I've been here since 1991, 1992, sometimes as a council assistant, chief of staff, city council member, seen a lot of changes, seen a lot of negotiations that have gone through with the different labor groups, and heard a lot of comments during the negotiations. And one thing that surprises me sometimes is, you know, how come council members of, I mean, I know what closed session is, you know what closed session is, I come, we can't make those comments out here? You know, that way you can understand the scope of things. One of the, some of the comments that I've heard today is that, you know, we all usually say up here from the dice, there's, to me, there's two kinds of thank yous. When public safety, police, fire go out on a call, and you've, you know, after you're through, you've done your job, and you get a thank you from that business owner, property owner, you know that's sincere. You know that's sincere. Sometimes you get a thank you from up here and you kind of wonder about it, how sincere is that? And that's kind of where I feel that we're going through today. How sincere are we in terms of wanting to work with you, to show you thank you, appreciate what you do? And that's being the truthful part about it, being sincere and showing the gratitude and say, you know, let's sit down, let's hammer this out. It's changed three or four times already, but you know, there's got to be, there's got to be a medium there. And to some degree, that comes between the membership and your leadership. You know, it's kind of like, folks, let's make a decision, you know, and let's come forward. And I got to tell you, your leadership, I think they've done a really good job in terms of trying to work out something that'll benefit. So, you know, that's, another thing that I look at is that we keep talking about the economy and the need for more jobs in this area, and you hear that from our Chamber of Commerce, our Economic Development Corporation and all that. And, you know, the one thing I found out years ago is when a major corporation is looking to relocate in a city, what's one of the first things they look at? Public safety, insurance. They say, you know, how many firefighters are there? What's it going to cost me to relocate there in insurance? How strong is there public safety programs there? And that's going to help me make my decision on a business level, because it's going to cost me less to do business there. It's good business to have good public safety. And we're, yes, we're trying to rebuild all that back up, but at the same time, we have to also maintain what we have. You know, all these calls that you've gone out on recently, you know, how many corporations were maybe looking to come to Fresno and say, boy, what's going on in Fresno? They don't have enough firefighters, because you see it on the news. Five stations had to respond to this fire and, you know, there was, there was no reserve, no reserves. So, you know, I just, to me, you know, we're, you know, by us not imposing up here today is a small way of saying thank you and let's continue, let's continue the talk, and not impose, but continue talking. And that also gives you an opportunity to work with your leadership and the membership to also come to some type of an agreement that we can also have something to look at, because it's like a moving target, guys. I mean, that's, it doesn't look good. But I do want to sincerely thank you for the work you do, and I hope that we consider that when we decide on our vote today, really what it's costing us on a business level as well. You know, and the talk has been, you know, it's been mentioned, you know, you've given back 13 million, and you heard a comment earlier that you can't blame us for the poor decisions. Well, we can't blame you for getting in the hole either. So, it's, it's, it's a two-way, it's a two-way street, and you know, we got to, we got to get there, guys. We really do. And so, that's my reason for not voting to impose. Thank you, Mr. President.
Doesn't look like anybody else has punched up. I'm just going to make a couple of brief comments. This has been, for me, it's, this is, since I was elected a year and a half ago, this is the first time that I've seen any type of negotiations go this far. I guess it had been done, Rick Steitz had mentioned about ATU, that was like right before my time. So, I had never seen, you know, a labor negotiation really function and then get to this point. So, and I might be wrong, I'm on a kind of a learning curve here. But, so a couple of things that I would just say is, like an example is, the guy, I can't remember if it was Lee or Christian, I can't remember which one of you guys said something about taking away the uniform allowance. I think the real way I would look at that is, two weeks ago, we were about to take this vote, two weeks ago today. You guys remember that. It was in the afternoon. And then you guys presented us a letter really early in the morning. This meeting had already started, but we got a letter, everybody was scrambling around. And we went into closed session and then we came out, we just felt like we couldn't, you know, with that new letter coming in, it was like, kind of, let's give this thing a chance to work again, which is what everybody's basically saying today. Let's give this thing a chance to work. And I appreciate Councilmember Baines' leadership on that part, because he said, hey, these guys, we owe these guys more time. And I agreed with him. And then, so, I want you guys to see how I view it. I don't look, I don't think this imposition, if it's voted on today, is going to last any long time, or it doesn't mean that it's going to last a long time. I really believe what Mr. Cardell said, that we will start negotiations later today, if that's what it means. But you get to this point where both sides are trying something and then you just kind of get to this logjam, and then this vote is just to kind of break that logjam, and then that whole process can be started again. So, I could be wrong on that, and you guys are free to come make an appointment with me and tell me more about why I'm wrong on that. I have no problem listening. So, I think, in my opinion, like a couple of weeks ago, we actually voted 7-0 to actually not cut the uniform allowance. And I know I'm just using that as one example, and there's all kinds of other parts of this thing that are probably even more important to you guys, but our vote was not to cut that, and then, but that's where today's vote will be. So, I hope that all this does is shakes up the pot or the container, and then we come back immediately and start negotiating. So, anyway, that's my final comment. We have a clear screen, so we have a motion and a second. We're going to take a roll call vote. Today, we're going to go in reverse order. And so, I don't think there's anything else to do before we take this vote. Madam Clerk, if you would.
Councilmember Jeong. Councilmember Quintero. Councilmember Olivier.
Yes.
Councilmember Capriolio. Councilmember Brandow.
Yes.
Councilmember Brand. Councilmember Baines. It's 5 to 2 in favor.
And even though we're going to be missing a couple of councilmen, we have one more short closed session item completely unrelated to this. And city attorney, if you would.
Yes, in closed session, we have conference with legal counsel concerning existing litigation of both of the Vega matters. I would not expect any announcement or return to public session afterwards. I would not expect any announcement or return to public session afterwards.
...